So, good morning, everybody. Welcome, Monday, March 5th, to our regular meeting of council. We'll call the meeting to order. Hope everybody had a great weekend, and some that had some time off, welcome back. And we're gonna go into new council business. First item we have on there is 2-1 from Counsel Parzlo. And this is a policy amendment that he wants to bring forward.
Yes.
Counsel Parzlo.
I'd like to move that this matter be deferred until the last meeting of June, in light of some staff situation.
Sure. Do we need a formal motion for that, Jim? Or can we just tag that?
No, you don't need a formal motion.
Okay. Okay, so that's the motion seconded by Counsel Wilbur. Any discussion on that? So, all those in favor? And opposed? It's carried? Thank you for that. Is there anything else under council business that anybody wanted to highlight? Go around, Counsel Schuman.
Yes, thanks. Of course, we just participated in the Local Government Leadership Academy little seminar in Prince George, which I think everybody enjoyed and probably got a lot out of. The other thing I participated in last week, or the week before, was the SiteC local government consultations. And I just wanted to let you all know that if you wanted to look at how that's all going, you can go on the B.C. Hydro website slash SiteC, and all of the relevant information that we've been discussing at those meetings are there. So, help yourself, and that's really all. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone on my left? I'll start with Counsel Malkinson, and then we'll...
I barely moved my arm.
I know. I saw you.
You're pretty quick here. I have two things to speak about, your worship. The first one, I know might make Mr. McFadden groan, but it's about the grad scavenger hunt. I was curious. I actually attended the meeting that they're planning, and I was want... They were wondering if I could ask about participation. I know that I'd be enthusiastic about participating in it, and they spoke about Mike, and they spoke about Terry. I wondered what you guys thought about taking part in it.
I've helped out for quite a few years now. Usually, they get me to be one of the things that hides, and they try to find me. But, yeah, definitely, I mean, that's a great opportunity, put it out there for council.
When you say "participation," exactly what does that mean?
Well, I don't really wanna speak about their plans, 'cause I'm not planning it myself, but they did... I did emphasize that we should have, you know, as many locations around the community, and just, you know, you being there to maybe ask questions, or, you know, being there at certain parts in the scavenger hunt, things like that.
And what's the date on that?
Um, I do have it in my phone. Would you like me to check?
Yeah.
It'll be on a Wednesday shortly, before crowds.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but...
Actually, oh, yeah, it's a couple months off, but I just wanted to see what you guys thought before the next meeting. It is taking place on the May, June... I am sorry.
I would...
Yeah, yeah.
So, I would just, next meeting you go to, I would just say that there are some people that would be very eager to assist, and once there's more information...
Sure, sure.
...you'll pass it along. That's probably the easiest for you.
And the second one, that I... The second matter that I wanted to bring up was the... We all attended the Prince... Well, with the exception of Counsel Parzlo, we attended the Prince George Seminar, and there was one suggestion there that I liked quite a bit, and I know I spoke with yourself about the suggestion. Well, about the, yeah, suggestion from George Cuff about having different community groups as delegations from time to time and inviting them. And, you know, we could... It would show that we appreciate their work, understand what they're doing, and what they've done to illustrate the role that they have in the community, you know? I think there'd be a lot of benefits, you know, them regularly attend.
Yeah, no, that's a great, great idea, something we can look at right now. As you know, when you and I talked, our delegations are open right now for anybody, but it might need a bit of prompting from some community groups.
Yeah.
You can always look at that as an invite. I don't see an issue with that at all.
Okay.
It's a great idea.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Counsel Wilbur.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Peace Country Choate has come on board as a partner with our cleanup campaign, so they will be purchasing vehicle litter bags, and will be passing that out, women go to the schools, on that day. And we're working with DC Recycling to be at the swap and shop to collect electronics that need to be recycled, so thank you to them for coming on board.
Is that first week in May? First weekend in May again?
It'll be May 5th.
Yeah. Perfect. Everyone highlight that day. I guess the day we get back from NCLGA. Okay, thank you. Anything else from council? No? So, we'll move on, then, to minutes. We have 3-1, which are the minutes from the regular meeting of council for adoption. Counsel Schuman, seconded by Counsel Malkinson. All those in favor? And opposed? It's carried? And does anyone have business arising? Seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence. The first item we have is 5-1, and this is a letter from the Dawson Creek Art Gallery. And this is regarding the art society looking for use of space at O'Brien School. Counsel Parzlo.
I need to leave the room, because I have...
Conflict?
Learned that I have a conflict interest.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so with Counsel Parzlo out of the room on conflict, I look to council, then. We have 5-1 there.
Worship, I know I'm gonna...
Counsel Malkinson, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I know I'm going to seem ignorant here. Why do we have the lease on this building, anyway? Sort of seems like it's put us in a tough position.
Are you talking about O'Brien?
Yes.
So, right now, we have a lease arrangement with the gymnasium portion, and they're looking to expand on that through this request. Jim, did you want to... Can you help me out there?
Yeah, through your worship, council received a couple of reports last year about the opportunity to lease the gymnasium portion of the O'Brien School and relocate some of our programs there, in order to relocate them from what we call the One Dollar Wonder, the old regional library building that caught adjacent to the now unused Centennial Pool. Council was looking for more usable space, moved programs to O'Brien, and as a consequence, a new daycare opened up in the leased space, or in the One Dollar Wonder leased space from us. So, it's... There's a considerable history to that, but at the moment, we don't lease any of the classrooms, we just lease the gymnasiums.
So, from the school, it's just saying they're vacant, basically, right now. Counsel Kenny?
Do we need a motion right now to get this on the floor?
Technically, yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I apologize.
So, if I could just make a motion for information.
To receive for information?
Receive for information.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Schuman. And then Counsel Kenny, go ahead.
Okay, so now we can talk about it?
Yep.
Okay, when we looked at the request earlier on from the artists, and there was confusion that they were coming with the ask instead of the art gallery coming for the ask, and so that was the... That was where we had left it, at our previous meeting. And so now, this is the art society coming officially, asking for...
Yes.
Asking for the use of this. I'm in favor of the use of them using. I think it's a great idea, but I don't know about at no cost at all. I think there should be a cost attached to it. And the art gallery will be generating money, because this room can be used for more than that. They were saying that they'll be using other programs, so, you know, I would be in favor of looking... Of talking with them about this again. I don't think with this letter that we can make any decision, because they didn't really give us a definite ask either way, with the letters a little ambiguous. So, I would suggest that we, through your worship, that we look at more of a direct ask and put some rent cost there for...
Sure. So, thanks for that. So, I'm just gonna ask Jim, then, in the letter, they quote $3,000 for the annual rent. Is that after discussions with the school district and with our staff? Have we came up to that number?
Yes.
So, technically, their ask right now, $3,000 is accurate, as far as we're concerned. So, then, the question would be, does council wish to fund the $3,000 or a portion thereof? Right now, the issue that they have, which is what was brought forward to us a couple of meetings ago, was the inability for all of the programs to run in the VIN top, or some of the people to access it. So, they're saying with this here, it'll actually help bring their numbers back up to where they used to be at some point, so... Jim?
Through your worship, your original request was from the Exploring Art Group. You turned that request down, and there were various statements from councillors about why they were turning it down, but one of the statements was that they themselves are not a registered society, they're simply one of the programs in the art gallery. And you left it open at that time for the art gallery to come back and make this ask. The art gallery has come back and made the ask. They are saying that they would run a number of programs out of that room. They indicate in their letter, new information to me, is that some of their programs are in jeopardy, not because the students can't get to the top of VIN top, in fact, some of them are youth groups, but actually because the instructors can't get up. The instructors are elderly and mobility challenged and can't get to the top of VIN top. So, the art gallery group are saying that this would basically serve as an annex to their operation. As you know, they have long had an aspiration to have an annex built. In fact, they've already determined they're going to call it the Edna Fail Learning Center if they ever get it built, and they're saying this would be a surrogate for that, and that they would run multiple programs out of there. They have also indicated they would take care of the opening and closing, which, as you know, is a big part of the expense that staff reported on the Exploring Art request being forward. So, at the moment, council has not indicated that they would rent additional space in O'Brien for this use, or any of these uses. If council is interested in doing that, they could certainly direct staff to negotiate a deal with the art gallery and bring it back for your pool.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, Counsel Schuman?
Through you to Jim, I would be in favor of that, and I would hope that they would be willing to put some funds towards this. I mean, that was what we sort of sent them back with the last time, was that we weren't expecting to pay the whole amount, and that perhaps through membership or whatever, that they could at least pay some of it. And then I see here that it's just the full ask again, so I would like for staff to go back and hammer out a deal with them.
Counsel Wilbur.
No, I'm definitely in favor of supporting them, but I do think that they should contribute something, considering part of this aspect is their numbers are gonna increase, so, you know, their income's going to be a bit more. The other question I have is, though it's a small renovation, but they need a sink, so what type of sink, and who's responsible for putting that sink in and bearing that cost?
I believe they've asked us to do that as well, which is...
Through your worship, the Exploring Art Group had canvassed out with Duncan Redfern, and we were... We had already put a price of $1,200 for the sink from the plumbing unit.
Okay. Anything else from council? So, then, right now, the motion is for information, but we can have a motion to refer back to staff, if you want. So, Counsel Kenny?
Sure, I'll make that motion to refer it back to staff to work with the arts council.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel McFadden. Any discussion, then, further? We can still discuss referral if needed. No? So, all those in favor, then? Opposed? It's carried? Thank you. So, that brings us to 5-2. 5-2 is a letter from the Union of B.C. Municipalities. This is regarding resolutions from 2011. You'll notice the one there that we sent in, and the response back. Counsel Kenny?
A move that we accepted for information.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Wilbur. Any comments, other than saying that this is actually one of the better responses we've ever received back on a resolution? It actually doesn't say "no." It says "maybe." Counsel Schuman?
So, we'll be, I guess, putting our information forward when they're doing that consultation in the fall. Hey, we'll be participating in that?
I'm not sure actively participating, but I'm not sure...
So, I'm sure they'll be coming to the municipalities for input, I would suspect. No?
That's an eager aspiration, but possibly. Jim, have you heard anything?
Through your worship, my understanding is that they are looking at a goal revision, and they are going to be consulting. We haven't seen how that looks yet.
Anything else? So, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried? 5-3 is a letter from the Honors and Awards Secretariat. This is for the Order of British Columbia, 2012, call for nominations. Counsel Wilbur?
A motion that we accept for information.
Thanks. Seconded by Counsel Kenny. Any discussion? Aside from hopefully putting it out for the media, you can flag this one. Any opportunity to get it out to the public would be appreciated. Is that what you're asking?
Well, I was gonna ask, in the past, like, who wins this? Like, is this people that do good works in the community, volunteer works, or, you know, they save lives, or who wins this order of appreciation?
All of the above, and last year, Gordon Campbell.
Oh. Okay.
No, they put it out... I mean, if you look through the criteria, they're looking for people who've just made a difference in making British Columbia a better place to live. So, there's a whole bunch of different categories of opportunities. So, put it out there, and I'm sure there's somebody out there that's...
Deserving.
Deserving of this, yes. Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried? And 5-5... Oh, sorry, 5-4 is a letter from Fort St. John, and this is regarding Municipal Government Day on May 30th. Counsel Schuman?
For information?
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Wilbur. And Counsel Schuman?
And I'd just like to say, I don't think I'll be able to attend this year, being that it's, I think, the day before we trot off to FCM, but if anybody else has the opportunity, it really is a fun day out there in Fort St. John, and councillors and councils from around the region show up, and it's just a fun day that, you know, you can get together with other councils and check out their Municipal Government Day. It's a good one.
Good, thanks. Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried? Now, 5-5 is a letter from the Northeast Native Advancing Society, and this is the Second Annual Northeast Aboriginal Achievement Awards Gala. I can see the look on the face, the second annual, this request came forward last year, and it was declined last year, but Counselor Gledu went, as a councillor. Counsel Schuman?
For information.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Malkinson. And any questions, then? So, for information, all those in favor? And opposed? It's carried? 5-6 is a letter from Mr. Arlen Dawkin, and this is, on behalf of the Kiwanis Club at Dawson Creek, a request for rent reduction at the trade fair. Counsel Schuman?
I may be excused from this for conflict.
Thank you. So, with that, so I put it to the council, then?
Your worship, I move that we receive for information right now, and we can talk about it, is that right?
Sure. Can you do that? So, seconded by Counsel Kenny. So, for information at this time, and so you can discuss it. So, Counsel McFadden?
Just for clarification, it's my understanding that at one time, the Kiwanis used the bill, the arena, for free, and then, two or three years ago, we started to charge them the non-for-profit rate, and then Mr. Dawkin now wants a 50% reduction in that rate. Do I have that correct? Am I...
That's pretty close. I'm not sure about the "free." I think it was a little longer than that, but Jim, do you know years?
Through your worship, I don't doubt that at some point it was free.
Oh.
But I polled everything since 2006. So, in 2006, the rental was about $8,000, and you granted half of the map to the club. In 2007, it was about $8,500, and you granted $4,000 back to the club. In 2008, it was about $7,500, and you granted $6,000 back to the club. So, that's approaching free. In 2009, it was $8,700 rental, and you granted nothing. Then, so the $8,700 was because there had been fee increases. In 2010 and 2011, the club took more days, a couple more days, so the rental went up to $13,500 each year, and you granted nothing back. The rate that's applied right now is the non-profit rate. As you know, councillors who were at the Brian Johnson Perk section, there is no particular reason for how you pick the non-profit rate. It's arbitrary. You picked it out of the air. You have committed to going through a process to set new fees and charges there that will actually have a rationale behind them, but for the moment, it's an arbitrary, randomly chosen number. I can almost guarantee you that the outcome of what you're doing now, is set fees and charges, looking at the difference between public good and private good, is probably gonna kick this event over more towards the public good end, which you're probably gonna have a different rate for the next year. It's probably gonna be less than the one that you're charging this year. But that's to be determined yet. Anything you do this year won't be a precedent exactly, because you're in the process of reducing the number this year.
So, on that, Jim, there, question around the $15,000, is that what we've already told them it would be this year?
$15,000 is the maximum it would be. It's gonna be in that $13,700 range, probably, unless there's an unfortunate event where something gets rolled in our best of every place.
Okay. So, Counsel Wilbur?
Well, my concern is, I guess, maybe paying the devils out, I don't care, but the Kiwanis do great things for the community. However, they charge fees for those booths to businesses who make money while they're there, so, you know, I think the fee is fair enough, that's what's being charged to other nonprofit groups, and, you know, the bottom line is, the money they bring in, they're charging people to be there to run business during those days, so I kinda have an issue with decreasing it when, really, there's money being made.
Sure, and maybe I'll give you a bit of background from some of the discussions that's happened in the years past, because, excuse me, some of the discussion around the great things that the Kiwanis do, to have the trade fair, and it's their big fundraiser of the year, and then, all of the money, because they're a local group, all of the money they raise from the trade fair, they then, in turn, donate back to community groups, such as the band, which is why we have conflict, K-PAC, I think to the cadets, like, there's a lot of things that they do back to the community. Where the discussions happened in the past was, council at the time had said, well, do we really reduce? Because what's happening is, we're basically giving them a grant for them to get money to give out grants, and then they're giving them out instead of council, people coming through council to give grants. So, I mean, that's... Not saying one's right or wrong, I'm just saying that's what the discussion's been in the past. Counsel Kenny might remember that. So, it's really up to council, then, do we want to waive some of this, so they can make more money, and then they determine where some of that money is spent in the community? So, Counsel Parzlo?
I think, just to formalize things, I think we should have a motion here. So, I'm prepared to move for...
We do have a motion on the floor right now.
Oh, do we? Sorry, I missed that. What is the motion?
Motion right now is just for information.
Oh, yeah.
Which means nothing to have to deal with. On information, nothing happens, but on a motion for information, you can refer or table, but if you wish, we can vote on this, and then go to actual motions, so... So, for information, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried? And then I'll look to Counsel Parzlo. You can now put a motion.
Thank you.
Process, sorry.
No, good for you. I'd like to move that we provide a 50% reduction in the rent to the Kiwanis Club for this function.
Okay. So, just to work clear, should we say... Are we saying 50% off of what the bill will be, or 50% off the $15,000 to $7,500?
My intention was whatever the bill is, whatever the rent is.
Okay. So, is that seconded? Counsel McFadden is seconding. And question? Counsel Kenny?
We don't have any numbers in front of us, like, for the motion. Like, they're asking for 50% reduction in... And I would like to see the numbers produced from last year, like, you know, what the numbers they make on the trade fair, and see if this is a real necessity to reduce it. Like, there may be a real clear necessity to reduce the lease of the building, but right now, we don't have enough information, really, to let us know that, so if I was... I don't feel that I can make a decision either way, not knowing what numbers are they really in crisis, do they really need to have this?
Sure. Jim?
Through your worship, I don't think they're claiming that they're in crisis. My understanding of the genesis of this letter is that they were having a discussion about upping the entry fee, and made a determination that rather than upping the entry fee, they would come to you and ask for a reduction, so that they could keep their $10 of that to get in. They looked at the alternative, which is that council is not going to provide such a fee, and they would... My understanding is they would up to the entry fee. They are... The argument they're making to you is, whatever you provide them by way of reduced rate, they leverage the use of their volunteers to more money to give away to the community. Their argument to you is, if you give them $7,000, they'll be able to give ten or more away to the community, because they use volunteers for this. That's their suggestion to you, is that it's a win.
And if I can on that, we have to look at the other side of this, too, is because it's volunteers, if it turns into the fact that we rent it for $15,000, and they make $15,000, so they break even, it's gonna get to the point where either we're gonna have to hire somebody to put on a trade show, or not have one, because the whole point with the Kiwanis doing is, it's a fundraiser for them. That's why they... The club spends so much of their time, and they volunteer, so if it's in a position where they're not making money, then they won't do it, I can almost guarantee to that. So, right now, we have the motion is 50% off of the bill, which Jim, right now, is saying will be anywhere between $13,000 and $15,000.
If you wish to provide certainty, you could pick up $6,500, $7,000, so that it wouldn't be available to the club to now expand the number of days that they're going to have the facility, because they know it's a 50% reduction.
Yeah, so Counsel Malkinson?
Can I propose an amendment to the motion? I'd like... I move that we grant them $7,000 flat back to them after the event.
So, basically, it's kind of a combination. So, it'll be a $50,000 reduction to a maximum of $7,000, is what we'll have staff put down on that.
Perfect, that sounds good.
That way, it's a true amendment. Okay, Counsel Kenny?
Yes.
Sorry?
She's seconding.
Oh, seconding. The amendment, okay. So, Counsel McFadden?
Well, I was gonna second.
Okay. So, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried? On the main motion is amended. Any other discussion? Okay, so, all those in favor? Opposed? It's carried? Before we move into delegations, Counsel Schuman? So, it is 9 o'clock. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone in the gallery, too. We're gonna move into delegations. Our first delegation we have is 6-1, and we have Mr. Roy Scaife from the British Columbia Government Service Employees Union, attendance, and this is for Social Service Awareness Month Proclamations. I'll just read out the proclamation, and then invite you to come forward. So, whereas community social services are vital to the quality of life to all British Colombians, and whereas community social services in British Columbia include services for children, youth, and families, Aboriginal peoples and communities, people with disabilities, people and families dealing with mental health and/or substance use... people and families dealing with mental health and/or substance use problems, people in community justice services including correction services, victim service programs, and Violence Aids Women's programs, women and their families in transition houses or sexual assault centers, individuals involved in community projects, employment training programs, and community rehabilitation service programs, as well as early childhood development and childcare, community living supports, multicultural, settlement, and immigrant services, and much more. And whereas the availability of these supportive services helps improve the quality of life for everyone while making our communities stronger, socially responsive, and more stable, and whereas greater recognition and understanding of the critical role these services play in our communities is needed to ensure their continued accessibility, availability, and improvement, so now therefore I do hereby proclaim the month of March as Community Social Services Awareness Month in Dawson Creek. Roy, you can come on forward.
The council, once again, for the proclamation, uh, this is part of an ongoing campaign to, uh, to move social services as we move, to try to bring more awareness to what we do, because the services we provide are ones that aren't seen as visible as our scene or ambulances or fire, uh, people, they aren't given the same level of respect, they aren't given the same level of understanding by the general public, so we're trying to raise awareness, promote the sea of the importance of the work that we do in the center to help build healthy communities, helping strong communities that provide services that are special to you. This is, I think, for sure, of a call.
Yeah.
So, my thinking is, uh, this is one of these, uh, we do have a handful that I'd like to have, I'm just trying to figure out. Uh, we're asking not just for, uh, great that we have the proclamation, but we also need people to support and to show their support to the government about how many people are actually accessing these services that we provide. There are, so, there's such a variety of services that are provided in the social service sector, from working with people with special needs to different services, uh, transition houses, working with teenagers who are not able to live up their own homes for abuse or another, and these services, because they aren't mainstream, they aren't seen by public, so people generally don't know and don't understand the services that we provide, and so with that, it's difficult to give respect and to give the public some notice. This is a, an ongoing, we've been doing this for over five years now, and will continue until such time as we can, this is public support, this is, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah. Uh, will there be any sort of, uh, events, a walk, uh, any sort of, uh, actual campaign out in the-
There is, uh, the locals that can refer, we do social services, just planning some events, they haven't, haven't created on them yet, uh, most of this unfortunately is planned for down south, I can see pretty much, March is still winter out here, so, some years, some years, it's not as bad this year, uh, so it's more difficult to have things like a community bar or something like that to break, break for it out, because you don't have that community below and loser today, that's, we go.
So, um, if there is something, uh, that does come up, that, that is out there in the community, if you've got a snowman and-
Yeah, yeah, we certainly will, uh, we will be having some posters and stuff up to the community as supplies get here, and yeah, everything is being coordinated for the community, so it's, it's a lot of difficult to actually get the stuff up here on top of it, but yeah, we will be letting, uh, 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 things together.
Thanks very much. Next we have, uh, Brenda Larrandell, six two. Is Brenda here or is it go-
It's-
Oh, okay, sorry. So we have the proclamation coming forward here, so I'll just read this out and then I'll invite you. So whereas in nineteen sixty-six, the United Nations declared March twenty-first the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, and whereas racism destroys the very fabric of opportunity, fairness, democracy, and mutual respect necessary for strong and healthy communities, and whereas the city of Dawson Creek wishes to join with community groups across the province in working towards the elimination of racism so that every British Colombian can participate fully and equally in the life of our province and country, now therefore I do hereby proclaim March twenty-first as the International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination in Dawson Creek. I'll invite you to come forward.
Well, our event goes on for seventeen on Saturday, and, uh, we would just invite everybody to come down to the management center. Um, we are hosting the world, we're having a free lunch, um, international, some, some dance, some crafts, we're all, uh, also, uh, we're also, uh, especially, uh, especially the past, it's not, it's, uh, uh, now, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's-
Excellent. Now, I'm, now, unfortunately, we can put it up to anybody else that's available, please. Now, are there any questions on that?
What time does it start, sorry?
Eleven thirty. And lunch is, uh, eight and twelve.
Excellent. Thanks, thank you. I don't see Darren, but I see a whole bunch of other people. So on six three, we have, um, another proclamation here that I'll read out, for International Women's Day. So whereas March eighth is International Women's Day and is the highlight of International Women's Week, each year at this time Canadians celebrate progress towards equality for women, and whereas International Women's Week two thousand and twelve begins on Sunday, March fourth, which was yesterday, and wraps up on Saturday, March tenth, the government of Canada's theme for two thousand and twelve is connecting girls, inspiring futures. This theme reflects the government's action to encourage more women to participate in leadership roles with girls, thereby, thereby helping them thrive, reach their full potential, fulfill their dreams, and to build a more prosperous Canada. And whereas International Women's Day is a global day celebrating the economic, political, and social achievements of women, past, present, and future, this special day provides an opportunity to celebrate the progress made to advance equality for women and to assess the challenges that remain. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim March eighth as International Women's Day in Dawson That's half the councillors' plan.
What's in the bag?
He got that bag.
International Women's Day, as, uh, where she said, is on the eighth, which is Thursday. This year we had our celebration last week. Um, connecting girls and inspiring futures is the theme, and with that being said, uh, the state of our popular culture and the kinds of impacts that that has on us, and, uh, we're all a part of that culture, and it shifted that culture in the past. There's an art of all of that, uh, written by all of us, and it's really good art, uh, of all of us, it's really hard, valid, and all of us challenge, our own assumptions and values, uh, are creating positive change. So the history of, uh, International Women's Day has sort of come forward, and that's one of the things, is give us grand, and give us roses, so that Brad, Brad knows his way.
Sorry, guys.
Thank you.
Oh, they smell really good.
There's some butter. There's some butter for my butt. Oh, that's lovely, the rose smells beautiful and the butter smells beautiful.
Yes, thanks for coming in. So next we'll move on to six four, we have Mr. Bud Powell, in attendance from Alaska Highway Community Society. You're gonna bring your cheering section with you, you're gonna do all the talking though?
I was always wondering what the, the hot seat's like. I've gone April along, she's well aware what it's like up in this seat. April is the administrator for our Alaska Highway Community, she's also mainly employed by Northern B.C. Tourism in Fort Tengon. First of all, I want to thank council for appointing me to the Alaska Highway Community District Board, I, uh, certainly appreciate it, it's something I've been passionate about for the last ten years, and it's something we've been pursuing in one form or another since the Wayne Dollin days, so it's not something that's happened overnight, but a lot of work went into it. The Alaska Highway Community Society is an offshoot of the old Norada. When Northern B.C. Tourism took over from, uh, took over Norada, we couldn't have tourism, two tourism associations, so we then, uh, developed the Alaska Highway Community with one goal in mind, and that is to try and get it named as a heritage site. Now, as, as your representative on there, I thought it was up to me to come and tell you what I've been doing and what we're doing. It's, uh, it's a mammoth task, it really is, but, uh, the more we travel down the road, uh, we know it's a mammoth task, but as we get to hurdles, we seem to abide them, and at the moment, uh, we just made a trip to Fort Nelson, talking to the people up there, to, uh, Parks Canada, uh, to all the communities, it has, uh, shown us, we took with us, uh, Contact Works representative, Julie Harris, who, uh, resides in Ottawa, has worked for years for Parks Canada, and now is consulting on her own, and we have hired her as our representative. I don't know if you all understand that the majority of the money that seemed to allow us to do this has come through the regional district, uh, the Peace River Regional District, of course, Dawson Creek, we have, uh, what we get annually from Dawson Creek, and Northern Rockies, uh, also has contributed some. However, right now, we're waiting for, uh, Julie Harris's report to come back, uh, hopefully by the end of this month, and if that report is favorable, and what that report is gonna tell us is rather we can actually move the project forward, if she, with her thoughts with Parks Canada, with the government down there, where they still feel that there is a, a better than fifty-fifty chance that we can attain what we're looking for, then we will move forward. If that is, uh, a positive, our next step then will be to have a, a really a visioning process to see where we're going and how best to attack the next thing down the line. The big, one of the biggest hurdles in this is that every owner, or every, uh, along the highway has to, uh, has to sign on, so that's all the First Nations, all the governments in Yukon as well, so it's, uh, it's a, a big undertaking, but, uh, something that, to this stage, we're still working on. We have secured funding, uh, from the regional district for at least another year or two to get us to the, the, the major stuff that has to be done, but we understand if, if we start going forward, we're gonna have to look for other funders, and, uh, at that time, we hope to bring in industry and, and other, uh, interested parties and see if it works. I think one of the, the big things we always get, and these are the questions that have to be answered, is, uh, you know, what, uh, the concerns, and that's a big one. Does it limit the ability for the, for the, uh, presiding governments to make changes? Does it add to the cost, does it add to red tape? Those type of things have to be addressed, and those are the things that we have to address in conjunction with these people as we move forward. The benefits, of course, are, uh, hard, um, many, many, but building bridges across jurisdictions, Yukon, B.C., all the municipalities, all the First Nations, all the regional districts, and both regional districts, Parks Canada, all those come together for one specific objective, and hopefully if we can do that, the bridges that we build are, are gonna be there forever. Joining a nationally respected band, uh, is, you know, is, is unbelievable, I don't know how many of you've traveled down to the eastern Canada, but I was down there recently, and everywhere you go, there's a national historic site, they're just that much older than us, and we just don't have many that really makes a splash. If we did this, this would be unique in as much as it'd be the longest road in the world that's ever been thought of in this, this respect, relate to common language, and sharpened as any of the Alaska Highway, tourism and community events. It is our icon in the east for tourism is the Alaska Highway, and Dawson Creek has recognized that for years with our Alaska Highway House and things that we do within. I should know when I was in South Dakota, I don't talk too much, so it's starting to wear on me. I'm under, April, any comments to make or help me along here?
Um, as Bud indicated, uh, just to provide a little bit of history for some of the new councillors, um, uh, this, there's been, uh, many years of work, uh, conducted in order to bring us to the stage, and one of the initial, uh, steps was a research project, and it was the Northern Rockies Alaska Highway Research Project, which provided with us with the numbers of the visitors, the demographics, and there was a mailback survey that actually also, um, provided, uh, the travelers with an opportunity to express their comments and their thoughts about the highway, and it was, it was, that was sort of a turning point for the decision makers within the Tourism Association to, to really take a look at what needs to be done, and, uh, to improve the visitor experience. And, um, the, uh, the recommendation to pursue national historic site status was made, uh, by the Executive Secretary for the Historic Sites and Monuments Board, so this process is something that's approved by the, uh, submitted for approval by the Historic Sites and Monuments Board, and it's Parks Canada who's the adminis- Sites and Monuments Board, and it's Parks Canada who's the administrator for the particular, for the national historic site designation process. So we, I do have a background there, which I will leave, and that provides a little bit more history of, of how the Alaska Highway came into being, the Alaska Highway Society, who the players are, and, and then of course, the various steps that we've taken in order to get to this point. So if Julie Harris's findings report does indeed recommend that we continue, then there will be steps taken to undertake community consultation. Community heritage planning is another important aspect, and that of course is something that Dawson Creek has already made steps to, to look at. And then also, the, the other challenge will be to communicate and work with the Yukon. And they are actually waiting in the wings for us to, to continue. So I think that that pretty much covers it in this.
Thanks April. Before I ask the question, maybe you could just update on what we're doing with NINAS too. I think that's another point.
Sure. So with regard to, and the way the Alaska Highway Community Society works is that there's projects that run through the society, and those projects are specific to the Alaska Highway. And the Northeast Native Advancing Society did commit considerable funding to, for the Alaska Highway Community Society to administer a story collecting project for the First Nation communities in the northeast. And that is research based, asking the members of the communities if they have questions and related, stories in relation to the construction of the highway and the impact of the construction. And so that, that project will be wrapping up by the end of March. And then also, we've been working with the community of Taylor to, to help them with the Taylor Memory Project, which once again is gathering stories about Taylor itself and how the people feel about Taylor, the residents feel about Taylor, but also with that we'll be drawing out the Taylor story in relation to the Alaska Highway. And Fort St. John has also invested funds in determining what their story is in relation to the highway. So in the, in the, in the vision for the future would be that the Alaska Highway, all of these stories for each community would be a living museum, and, and that's how communities would also become involved in supporting that national historic site designation, which in itself is merely a commemoration, but it's up to all of us to, to gather the stories and determine how those stories will be told through an interpretive strategy.
Okay, thanks April. And any questions for anybody?
Well, for the questions Bud, first, thanks for accepting the position and helping us out. As you know, as we know anyway, it's, it's always been a real passion of yours, and we appreciate that because like most things, you need somebody to basically champion and take things on. And I know it's been quite a few years now since you did the trek up the Alaska Highway.
That's right.
But we're hoping that, you know, going forward, when people do make that trek, it'll be recognized as a historical site. So we really appreciate all the efforts.
Thank you.
Cheryl?
Yeah, as you know, this, this whole thing is near and dear to my heart. I'm Alaska Highway. I grew up on the Alaska Highway, up and down the Alaska Highway, and so I'm, I will be eagerly awaiting, is it Judy or Julie?
Julie.
Julie, I'll, I'll be eagerly awaiting to hear.
Yeah, we are as well Cheryl.
So you'll be letting us know?
Absolutely. At least April, she's here most weeks now as tourism Dawson Creek, I guess, because as you know, Dustin's gone and replacing him wasn't as easy, maybe people suspected. So that's ongoing, and April is picking up the load.
So when you talk about all the different organized communities and First Nations, does it also include, you know, like the lodge owners up and down the highway, you know, Toad River, I mean, that's quite a historical spot.
I guess if they own land, yes.
Yeah, so it goes right in there too.
Right down to anybody that owns a piece of land along the Alaska Highway. The big thing about the Alaska Highway, which I think most people understand, that the federal government maintains most of it. And having them on board, we, we visited with Patty Whitten in Fort Nelson, and it's amazing the amount of information that they have about the old highway and what's still there, although you don't think there's much, but there's quite a bit. And that's where we're, why we started this years ago, is we're going to lose it. And if we lose the Alaska Highway, it'll just be a road to Alaska. So we have to maintain that, and that's what's driven us to this stage. Anyway, thanks for your time. If there's no more questions, appreciate it.
Thanks again Bud for coming in. Thanks April. Okay, so we're just going to take a two minute recess while we set up the PowerPoint for our next delegation. Then we'll call them in back order. I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Jay Morrison, who's going to lead us through and do introductions, and we'll go around the room here afterwards. And I know you have a PowerPoint and a presentation for the community.
Yeah.
And thanks for coming in.
Yeah, thank you very much Mayor Mike Bernier and council.
I see the screen on.
Yeah, thank you for having us today. My name is Jay Morrison, as you've said, and with me today is Pat Mason. We're representing Spectra Energy, just to give you a broad brush overview of the company. Just an outline of the short presentation I have for you today. I'll tell you a little bit about our background, so where we are, what we do, and how we do it. Then I'll give you a little bit of information on why we consider ourselves the partner of choice, and this is really in how we do our business. And then I'll tell you about where Spectra Energy is going to go in the future. This is the footprint of Spectra Energy Transmission West. That is a business segment of Spectra Energy. It's a North American wide company, but SET West is in just the western portion of Canada. We are a midstream company, meaning we gather from producers, raw gas, to our facilities where we process the gas into sweet natural gas and different natural gas liquids. And then we transmit the gas to markets where a distributor will distribute to actual houses. The dark blue lines represent our gathering lines, the triangles are our processing facilities, and the light blue lines are the transmission lines. So within SET West, there are four main business units. There's the BC Pipeline, that's the sweet gas, the big pipelines. BC Field Services, those are our big facilities and a lot of our gathering lines. And then Midstream, which is also facilities and gathering lines. Natural Gas Liquids, that's another cut into the sweet gas, that's down in Empress in Alberta, and they do, they make things like propanes and butanes. A closer up shot of where we are near your area. Spectra Energy Midstream, their gathering lines are indicated by green, and their facilities are the white triangles. There are five facilities very nearby Dawson Creek.
Is that five soon to be six?
No, it's, it's five midstream. The sixth facility is going to be the Dawson Processing Plant, and that's a field services operated facility. We've also got the South Peace Pipeline, which was constructed five years ago. And we've got the Alberta Main Line and the Fort St. John Main Line. They're the light blue lines that run fairly close to this area. Number of employees in this area, 299, so we do employ a large number of people. So in the how we operate, one of the main reasons we consider ourselves partner of choice is our consultation approach. We consult prior to, during, and after, during the operation of all of our facility construction. We like to make our facilities inclusive of all of the needs in the area. So we want to have the best project include as much information from local stakeholders as possible. We also like to include them in actually constructing the project and operating these different facilities. So we like local and Aboriginal content to be included in our contracts. On the Aboriginal side, this is also true. We like to help develop their economies as well as build capacity in their communities. Every year we do a sustainability report. It will be available in April of 2012, or 2012 this year for the 2011 report. This report is reflected in the Dow Jones, different markets and things. Part of the sustainability is our strategic giving programs. So we've given 1.2 million dollars to local organizations, meaning local along our lines. Thirty thousand five hundred of that went directly to organizations within Dawson Creek, including organizations like Step Up &amp; Ride, the Victim Services, South Peace Seniors Access Services Society, a multitude of different organizations. We also do volunteer hours, of our employees volunteer hours to different community events. Over 4,400 were tracked last year. And United Way is a big way that we also participate in our communities. So in 2011, 613,000 dollars went to United Way, who then distributed these funds to different organizations in the community. We are big into education and training. Two of the things that we're heavily involved in are the Northern Opportunities Program. This year is the 10th anniversary, we were a part of that, as well as the Fourth Class Power Engineering Program, which we just started with. It's a partnership with us and Cana and Northern Lights College to train local students in the Fort Nelson area and northeast BC area for power engineering jobs, which are important to us and important to the whole industry. Safety is the absolute priority at Spectra. So we do safety of our pipeline right of ways in two ways. We do aerial inspections of the rights of way, just helicopters flying over to monitor the vegetation on the right of way, see if there's any encroachment, anything taking place on the right of way that we don't want to see on the right of way. And of course, there's inline inspections as well. A smart pig is, if you can see, this is a smart pig here. It is put inside of the pipeline to determine wall thickness of the pipeline itself. As it goes along, it can, the entire length of a pipeline, it will determine the thickness and determine where any anomalies exist. If there are anomalies, we do what we call an anomaly dig. So we go and dig the pipeline to see what is happening with either corrosion or whatever the anomaly is that they've detected. We determine what needs to be done to keep the pipeline safe. Of course, this is a big part of preserving the environments around our facilities. So the environment is very important to us inside of our facilities for the safety of our workers, around our facilities for the safety of the public, and of course, to preserve the environment itself, the wildlife and the wilderness is of utmost importance to us. So we do things, we are regulated by the National Energy Board for emissions. We're constantly monitoring emissions thresholds. We're always doing facility inspections with full turnarounds on a three or four year cycle. And protections of our facilities also very key for us. This is an example of a right of way. They're generally 18 meters wide, the right of way itself, where the pipeline is contained. And on either side of that, there's an additional 30 meter buffer, safety zone. This is just for our, so that we have the ability to access the right of way and the pipeline if anything should happen. We are governed by the pipeline crossing regulations, and we're regulated by the National Energy Board. So they're the ones who define these different standards and different widths and sizes of rights of way, and what we can do on the rights of way, and what people can do on the right of way in terms of crossings and digging, et cetera. And finally, why, why we, how we do business that we consider ourselves the partner of choice is through our emergency preparedness and public awareness programs. Our emergency preparedness team does the development of emergency planning zones, and they relay and communicate this information to the local first responders. The public awareness team relays and communicates this information to the public, the residents, anyone who lives in the emergency planning zones. And Spectra Energy's public awareness team is the founding member, or one of the founding members of the Call Before You Dig program in BC. Looking to the future, you can see we are already going to markets in Alberta, down to Vancouver is our main market, and northwestern United States. But now we're looking to go to markets in Asia and support and supply gas to the LNG export terminals in Kudumet, meaning liquefied natural gas. Our assets are ideally located already, of course, the Horn River Basin and the Montney Shell Gas Basins are the areas of growth for drilling, and we have strategically located assets in these areas as it is. And so that's, that's positive for our company. For the future in this area in particular, and northeast BC, but in the southern portion of it, near Dawson Creek and Fort St. John, we have three projects in the works right now. There's the, the one that's closest to Dawson Creek is the Dawson Processing Plant. It's a 200 million cubic feet a day gas processing plant that should be operational early 2013. It's currently being constructed. The other two projects are pipeline and compressor station projects on our sweet gas main lines. So we've got the 2012 project, it's at the NEB, being looked over by the NEB right now, waiting for approval. It's the, oops, sorry. It's this area right here. It, it parallels the existing right of way, and it goes through Beryl Prairie. It's a 42 inch pipeline loop, and we have a 30 and a 36 inch line already on that right of way. The other project is split into four, there are four components to the other project, the 2011 project, which is wrapping up construction right now. The four components are the N4 compressor upgrade, and that's pretty far north of Hudson Hope and Beryl Prairie. And then south of that, that's, that's an upgrade to compress gas to supply this area, this additional 24 kilometer 36 inch pipeline loop with the, with the pressure it needs. We've also got closer to Dawson Creek, closer to home again, the, a new 20 kilometer lateral Stuart Lake Pipeline. It's 36 inch, and it is going to supply gas from our existing Fort St. John Main Line here to the Nova Gas Transmission Line that goes to markets in Alberta. At the end of that is the Sunset Compressor Station, a new compressor station that we're building as well. We've also got ongoing operations and maintenance that we do on all of our facilities for now and for the future, picking, corrosion digs, vegetation management. We are of, one of the largest, if not the largest taxpayer, property taxpayer in all of British Columbia. Last year, we paid 64 million dollars to different taxes in BC. The, of course, the channels that the taxes go through and are distributed to different municipalities are complicated, but of the 64 million dollars, Dawson Creek received 690,000 dollars approximately in hospital funding for this area from spectral tax dollars. To be successful, we're interested in working with all local governments. So a collaborative approach to our projects is really what we're looking for. We like input. If you have things that you can let us know to do differently or to do better, we can take those into consideration as we move forward. Thank you very much for your attention this morning, and now I'll take any questions you might have.
Getting better at this. Nearly a while.
Not too dry.
Go around the room for, for council. Any, any questions first of all? No? Charlie, councillor Parzol?
Thank you for the presentation. Some time ago while having supper in Prince George, I read a local newspaper there that said the Dawson Creek Plant, the one that's under construction, would add 10% to the total carbon loading that goes on in British Columbia. That was an article. Can you share some maybe more informed light on that?
I'll turn it over to Pat.
I knew I came for something. So, you know, I, I, my role as the operations manager out at the new Dawson Plant, so I think, you know, the technical side of that question, I can't verify the number for sure. I don't have those details, but the, the additional carbon loading from the facility is, is likely related to the emissions from the exhaust of our power generation facilities on site. We have gas turbine generators that are fueled by natural gas, so they do burn natural gas in the turbines, and they drive a generator. So we, we produce our own power for the facility through that. So, we, we produce our own power for the facility through that. So, so that, that would relate to the carbon loading. The number, the number seems high to me, but I, I'd have to get back to, with expert data on that.
Yeah. We can get back to you on that. It's not like ten percent. I, it's not even a guess, it's way, it's, it's way too high. It could be the whole formation development.
Let me give you some further context to that. The article also listed the major industrial, major industries that, that contribute to carbon loading in, in the province, and ours up here, of course, because of the nature of the business, were, I think the first two were located in northeast British Columbia, and the article said this new plant was going to be number three. Number one and two were owned by Spectra Energy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'd have to have a look at the article, but just, just in scale of magnitude, you know, our, our, our operations in northeast B.C., we have three large facilities, the Pine River Gas Plant out, just southwest of Chatwin, and we have another large facility in Fort Nelson, just south of Fort Nelson, and then the big one in Taylor. Those are kind of the three significant facilities for us, and those are all significantly larger than the Dawson facility, so.
Yeah.
And larger than any other company's has up here, just to put it in context, too.
The, the, the way that the gas industry in B.C. has developed is different from Alberta, for example. So, we have central facilities that process gas from a lot of different field, well, a lot of different wells, whereas in Alberta, there are small producer processing facilities dotting the landscape all over. So, this is a better, for us, it's a better model because you can bring in gas from different locations and continue to use the facilities that are already there instead of building new ones and decommissioning as you go through. So, I, I mean, they are big carbon producers, and we know that, but there aren't that many of them, there are not thousands of them. So, it, it may, it, it can look, it can look like they're, they're huge emitters, and on their own, they are compared with other facilities, but we have a few of them, so it's, it's, that's how it's weighed out a little bit, is that they're central processing plants, which is different from the Alberta system.
Yeah, I just thought I'd ask the question as you were here, because, you know, so much of what you read in newspapers, unfortunately, sometimes there's another story or there's another aspect to it. But one supplementary to that, of course, there's a lot of concern about the byproducts of flaring. I don't know if any of you have read Andrew Nickelfort's book called Saboteur, Sabotage, Weibo Ludwig's Fight Against the Oil Industry. And I'm just wondering, you know, if there's any plans in the future to reduce the flaring that occurs from these processing plants?
Yeah. Well, right now, in the works, we have a carbon capture and storage plan in the Fort Nelson area. So, that's carbon capture sequestration. And what happens is that the, the carbon dioxide and hydrogen sulfide, the waste produced at gas plants, instead of it being flared in, into the atmosphere, into sulfur dioxide and carbon dioxide, it'll go to facilities underground in deep saltwater caverns. So, that is one, one of the ways that we're looking at reducing these types of emissions.
Just with our new facilities, and the Dawson Plant is a good example as well, you know, with, in addition to what Jay just mentioned, you know, the, the ongoing objective is to minimize and reduce flaring, and a new facility is designed much differently than one that would have been built fifty years or thirty years ago. So, you know, some of the features that are incorporated into a facility like the Dawson Plant are vapor recovery systems where there's multitudes of sources, small sources throughout a facility where in the old days, those would have just been released and vented to atmosphere. We collect all those types of sources into a header, recompress it back into the front end of the, the plant, and so those types of gases that would have been flared in the old days are, they, they end up being processed and they go to market. You know, it's obviously the, the emissions and the environmental concerns are driving that one, but there's an economic driver as well. That's, that's, that's a commodity that can be sold.
Hey, thanks, Counsel Schuman.
Thanks. So, the carbon tax. I heard one time that you guys are the biggest payer of the carbon tax in, in British Columbia, I think.
Right up there, yes.
Something like that. So, has that inspired any innovation to reduce emissions on your behalf? I know that the carbon capture and storage would be one of those. And would it be continuing to move forward, given the freeze on the carbon tax that the British government is, is looking at?
You're getting all the good questions.
Yeah. We, we need somebody with an, our environmental group here, to be honest. But, but you're absolutely right. The carbon capture and storage project is a key one that's aimed at reducing that footprint, absolutely. I, I can't speak to the, the, the details around the, the carbon credit program and things like that, but I know we're also working with our, our customers, our producers, on an ongoing basis to, to try to, to look for ways to, to reduce that footprint, absolutely. I, I don't have good details, though, for you, but I'm sure we can get those back to you.
Yeah. I'll ask you a question closer to your department, and how are things going with the plant?
Yeah, thank you. They're, they're coming along, and I think last time we sat in the room here, it was almost a year ago, I guess, we sat and talked to you. You know, our objective was to get the first phase, and just to elaborate on Jay's comment, you know, our plan is to have the full 200 million cubic foot a day capacity of the plant up and running in 2013. But the plant is being built in two phases, and when we talked to you last time, we were hopeful that we'd have the first phase, the first 100 million on, on production by November of last year. But obviously, that, that schedule has slipped, and we're, we're still working on Phase One, but we're now looking, our, our latest schedule is, we'll have that online in April, so we're quite a bit more confident on that. We're actually starting the process of commissioning some of the multitude of systems associated with that first phase is actually starting this, this last week, so.
I think everybody in the industry is used to setting a timeline and nothing coming to fruition exactly the way you want it, but.
I, I think it's a good news and a bad news thing. You know, one of the, the challenges that we've had is accessing skilled workforce as well, so, so I, I, I hope that we won't find too many skilled construction people in Dawson Creek that aren't employed right now, so. But that was one of the significant challenges we had, is getting the people there that we needed.
Once the plant's up and running, how many additional staff are we looking at?
So, our forecast right now is we'll have a full-time complement of about twenty people, twenty to twenty-five people working at the site. And our construction workforce, I think we're probably at about 125 people on-site today, but it's ranged anywhere from 100 people. I think it's peaked at 300 people there during the, the peak of the construction, so.
Any more questions from counsel then? No? Well, thanks, gentlemen, for coming in. And if you haven't given any of that information, you can definitely send it off to us on an email with some of the questions you have here, but put you on the spot for things I know you probably couldn't answer today.
Those are excellent questions, and I did make note of them, so we can, we'll, we'll direct those back to you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks again. And we'll just recess for five minutes, everyone, and get set up again.
Four minutes.
Say thanks, everyone, we'll call the meeting back to order. This time, we are moving into reports. The first report we have is seven-one. This is Report 12-036 from the Chief Financial Officer, and this is regarding Strategic Community Investment SCI Funds Agreement. Counsel Parzol?
I'd like to move that Report Number ADM 12-036 from the Chief Financial Officer. The Strategic Community Investment Funding Agreement be received. Further, the council authorized staff to enter into the Strategic Community Investment Funds Agreement with the Province of B.C. effective upon signature through June 30th, 2015.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel McFadden. Any discussion? Counsel McFadden?
Just from my information and perhaps the public, I'm wondering if Shelley could just explain in a bit more detail what this is all about. Traffic fines and something else.
Small, this is a small community grant?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, certainly. Through your worship, the Strategic Community Investment Funds Agreement came into being in around 2009, when the province took the Small Communities Grant and the Traffic Fine Revenue Sharing Grant and tagged it to this agreement. And basically, what they did was they took an annual provincial grant and put it into a three-year agreement so that they could provide funding, I believe, at higher values early on in the agreement because they were more certain. The provincial funding model is different than the local government in that they get their revenues from various sources. So, the certainty is, is higher in the early, earlier years and lower in the future years. So, the first agreement that the city signed was in 2009, and this is just a renewal of the agreement. The two grants involved or included in the agreement is a small community grant. It's based on a number of criteria, including population, and the province calculates it based on, now, the 2011 census. The Traffic Fine Revenue Sharing Grant is to do with traffic fine, fine revenue that they receive, and then there's a formula that they distribute it across the province to the different communities. The City of Dawson Creek uses a small community grants funding to offset general government services, and the traffic fine revenue sharing is allocated to the policing service. The new agreement, basically, although it's significant in dollars, it's 1.5 million dollars over three years, is declining from the previous agreement by about $475,000. And some of the objectives that the province is hoping to achieve is that as they give this money to local governments, the local governments will be able to spend it on local initiatives and stimulate the economy and create local jobs. So, the good thing for us is that we have budget certainty in the amount that we get, and I guess the only disadvantage of the model that they use is that we have high revenue in year one but low revenue in year three. So, it basically declines unless they have additional revenue that comes to them, so. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this, then? Seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, it's carried. So, next is seven-two, and this is 12-002 from Recreation Facilities Manager, and this is Memorial Arena Ice Extension. Counselor Kenny.
I move the recommendation that Report Number CS 12-002 from Recreation Facilities Manager regarding the Memorial Arena Ice Extension be received, and further that the request from the Mile Zero Figure Skating Club to extend the ice season to April 30th be denied. Further, that the ice remain in the Memorial Arena until April 12th to assist the Mile Zero Figure Skating Club, and further that staff be directed to market that available ice for rental to traditional and other recreational users to offset costs.
Excellent. Seconded by Counsel Malkinson. And any questions, comments? Counsel Wilber.
I'm just wondering, it's mentioned in there, the $3,000, is that, that revenue, does that include the old post and fossil hockey teams, or is that potential?
Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, it does. It includes all the renters that we have so far contacted and who have agreed to take up ice. We are hopeful that we can find other renters, but it's problematic at that time of the year.
So, without, so, just so we're aware, so, the reason why we usually pull the ice out is because we don't have a lot of renters, and it costs a lot of money to keep the ice and the staff and everything there, so if we do keep it open, then.
Yeah, through your worship, the recommendation adds about $4,400 to your budget, and that's the worst-case scenario, that's if we can't find any other ice renters.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Counsel Schuman, you had your hand up? You still have a question?
Yeah, it, it was pretty much the same question that Counseler Wilber asked. I'm just looking at, so they're asking for this ice extension for basically two and a half hours a day, the Mile Zero Figure Skating Club.
Yes.
Yeah.
One thing to always keep in your mind, it's, this will cost money, so in theory, it's kind of a grant, because now we're going to be spending money to keep the facility open, but without it, these lovely kids won't be able to keep, continue skating, so it's just one of those things that we continue looking at. Jim?
Yeah, through your worship, last year, we were able to accommodate the figure skating club at Encana Events Center. The Rage has a spring camp over the Easter long weekend, and after that time, the ice will come out at the Encana Events Center because of the gun show. Because spring shows have become dry ice or dry floor, spring shows have become so popular, now we have the Quanis Trade Fair at our memorial and Kinna arenas, and we have the gun show at Encana Events Center. The ice isn't kept in as long as it has been in past years, so it's just, we just can't see a way of accommodating all the way to the end of April for this, for the club.
Yeah, thanks. Anybody else have a question? Counsel Malkinson, you're done? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay. So, no other comments, then? So, all those in favor? And opposed? And it's carried. So, seven-three is Report 12-003 from the Deputy Director of Community Services, and this is for the Monkey See, Monkey Do Preschool Lease. Counsel Malkinson?
I move that we receive this report from our director, Deputy Director of Community Services, and that we direct our staff to execute the attached lease agreement between the city and Monkey See, Monkey Do Preschool for 1,000 square feet of upstairs space at the Youth Care Center Building for a two-year term commencing September 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2014, at a rate of $1,000 per month, with the exception of December and March, which will be billed at $500 per month in the recognition of decreased availability of space due to community services programming, and further that the lease fee for July and August be waived.
Seconded by Counsel McFadden. Any question, Counsel Schuman?
My question is around, so, those months when the community service programming is going on, they're, like, I'm confused about that. Where are they going to put the children that they have enrolled in the programs? Like, is that, is that what it is? Is the space is reduced, so then they? I, I was just confused around that a little bit.
Sure, the enrollment, but Jim?
Through your worship, we run community service programming at a time for spring break and for Christmas break, so we're providing an alternative for parents at that time, but the Monkey See, Monkey Do enrollment drops off significantly at those times.
Oh, okay.
This is sort of a, we have complementary programs. At spring break and Christmas break, parents are not generally putting their children in, into the Monkey See, Monkey Do, but they are often interested in shorter programs, two- and three-hour programs that we run as an alternative.
Okay.
Which competes against them, so that's where we're working with them, I guess.
Yeah.
It's worked very well over the last year and a half, and as you notice in the report, although council no longer provides daycare, you're still very interested in whether the community provides daycare, and Monkey See, Monkey Do has gone from 30 to 50 and anticipate going to 60, so over the course of this lease, they will have actually doubled the number of daycare spaces available from the one operator.
Yeah, no, that's great.
Any other questions? So, all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Next is seven-four, and that's Report 12-033 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for a development permit for Pacific Rim Services at 1716 Willowbrook Crescent. Counsel Parzol?
I'd like to move that Report Number ADM 12-033 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development, read the Development Permit Application 12-02 for Pacific Rim Services be received. Further, that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for Development Permit 12-02, and authorize to issue Development Permit 12-02 to Pacific Rim Services for the upgrades to the townhouse units located at 1716 Willowbrook Crescent upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and re- upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and receipt of the required financial security in the amount of $65,000.
Seconded by Councilor Wilber. Any questions, comments? Aside from another great thing here, somebody's coming forward with some money to fix up.
Smart enough, yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor? Opposed, it's carried.
Would be nice to see.
And 7-5 is Report 12-034 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for a development permit at the UFA Cooperative at 401 Highway 2. Councilor Kenny?
I move the recommendation that the Report Number ADM12034 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding development permit application 1203 for UFA Cooperative Limited be received, and further that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development permit, construction of a bulk fuel sales and card lock facility with a 1,500-square-foot warehouse and associated 1,500-square-foot retail office space located at 401 Highway 2 upon successful completion of the required 10-day notification period and receipt of the required financial security in the amount of $100,000.
Excellent. Seconded by Councilor Schuman. Any questions or comments? No? Just bigger and better. It's all good. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. And last in the reports, we have 7-6, and this is Report 12-035 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for another development permit for Mr. Harry, or Dr. Harry Neveling at 1020 105th Avenue. Councilor Malkinson?
I move that we receive this report from our Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development regarding this development permit application for Dr. Harry Neveling, and further that staff be directed to proceed with the required notification process for development permit, for a development permit, and authorized to issue this development permit to Dr. Harry Neveling for the construction of a 1,600-square-foot addition to the medical clinic located at 1020 105th Avenue upon successful completion of the 10-day required notification period and receipt of the required financial security in the amount of $25,000.
Seconded by Councilor Schuman. Any questions? Jim?
So we seem to be passing rather lightly over this, but what you have here is someone investing in a revenue-generating residential property, someone expanding a retail and commercial outlet, and someone expanding a medical clinic, all in a routine meeting in March.
I know. It's all good, and the one thing I really like, too, is on this one here...
We're beyond getting excited.
I spent many years of my career sitting here, hoping we would get one such application in a year.
Yeah.
Sorry, we don't...
What I like about this one, too, is it's something else enhancing downtown. You know, it's really important to see businesses down there that are willing to invest and bring more people into the core, so that's great news.
Yeah. I feel bad we didn't get excited.
Well, we'll do a big group hug afterwards and thank all the business community.
I'm feeling bad now.
You should. Terrible.
On that, anything further from council? All those in favor of this great news? Anyone opposed? Of course not. It's carried unanimously.
Great news.
So that moves us to bylaws. We have 8-1, and this is 12-031 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development. This is for zoning amendment bylaw 4130 for first two readings. Councilor Kenny? And seconded by Councilor Schuman. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. And 8-2, this is Report 12-032 from the Director of Infrastructure and Sustainable Development for the zoning amendment 4131, 2012. This is for first two readings, and this is for 1401 102nd Avenue. So Councilor McFadden, seconded by Councilor Wilber. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Brings us to mayor's business. Couple of things. First, I want to remind everybody, of course, everybody in this room knows, but for the public, tomorrow night, 7 o'clock, at K-PAC, is our first community budget consultation meeting, where we'll be showcasing our 2012 draft budget and looking forward to people coming out and looking at what's proposed and looking at having that input from the community. The other one which Councilor Schuman alluded to was the training session that we went to for newly elected down in Prince George. Great turnout. I think there was 140 people registered for that from around the north, and some great speakers and some great information that was shared. Yes. And thanks for not throwing anything at me when I was on stage, Councilor. Then the only other thing is just a reminder to council that I am leaving right after our meeting on Tuesday, invited down to Texas for the World Energy Conference, invited down there to participate and be on a panel and speak about the importance of energy to municipalities and to the region, so looking forward to that opportunity. Other than that, I'll turn things over. Jim, now, on the diary.
I'll take that to Greg, your worship. Thank you, your worship. Calvin Crook Center, things are really starting to heat up. On any given day, there'll be between 30 and 40 workers on-site now. The main floor has been poured. It looks great. It makes the whole back-of-house area seem to be about three times bigger than it looked before, which is awesome. Basement floor will be poured on Wednesday. Steel studs on the second floor are done. They're now working on the main floor. They've got all of the daycare done, or they had all of the daycare done on Friday. They worked through the weekend, so they're probably about 50% complete on the main floor. There's heat ducts, and plenum's ongoing. They're about three-quarters complete on the second floor. New glass is starting to go in today. The electrical service is complete, underground service and electrical work, of course, is ongoing. And they started installing the sprinkler system. The tender for the theater lighting, the drapery and sound system closed. At first blush, it appears to be on budget, which in itself is kind of exciting. But we'll have to have a look, do a complete analysis this week, just to make sure that the tenders are conforming. And new energy modeling, using the actual heating and lighting system that we are installing has come forward and given us an extra two points towards our lead gold standing. So that appears to be within our grasp. And we're doing a value engineering session on March 27 to try to bring the project back within budget. We'll be doing that in the morning, and then the afternoon will be construction meeting. And to anticipate the question from council, at the end of January, progress billing was for 41%, so I suspect by the end of February, progress building will be darn close to 50%. The reclaimed water plant's not nearly as exciting anymore. They're just finishing off the roof, if the weather cooperates, which it's doing. They're working away on the mechanical process machinery, and the electrical components that were holding us up finally came in, and their work is progressing on that. Big news is that First Street will be closed all week long to permit the installation of the water service. And the sad news is, it appears that achieving lead gold for that building is unlikely, and lead silver may be more realistic, due to the fact that we only have one full-time equivalent using it, and it has heavy process loads. We had, we pulled out all the stops trying to get lead gold, but it looks like we're going to fall just slightly short of that. So be happy to take any questions from council.
Councilor Parzle?
Would you mind rereading that part of the report on the Calvin Crook Center about budget? I missed the preamble. I heard the word budget, but I missed the two or three words preceding the word budget.
We'll be doing a value engineering session. That will be with the design committee, the mayor, Jim, and Wayne Hebert, along with Terry Hannon, to go over the remaining components in the building to see if we can eliminate or reduce any of those components to bring us back on budget, since the, all the remediation work we had to do with asbestos and lead kind of put us slightly over.
Thank you. And what was the lead comment about the Calvin Crook as well? Was that a gold standard you were shooting for?
We were shooting for gold, and when we originally did the energy modeling, it was kind of based on a generic heating and lighting system. But it's been redone based on what's actually going in there, and that's gained us, it's, lead works on point systems for a variety of different components in the building, and that's given us an extra couple, which gives us a more comfort margin in achieving that.
Okay, Councilor Schuman?
Thanks through you to Greg. So you commented that the tender for the lighting and such has been put out or has come back in. That will be up for discussion when you have your meeting with regards to getting things back on budget? Or will that be out of the, out of sort of the realm of cuts if there need be?
We can always have a look at that, but the way it's structured now is that was a separate kind of pot of money. We had a budget for, and we designed according to that budget. It can be reduced. However, once we, if we've made that part of the budget, I don't know if the group really wants to look at that or not. It'll be up to them.
I was just curious if that would be up for discussion, if there were to be cuts. Thanks.
Yeah, likely will be.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thanks for highlights there again. I will move to the consent calendar, 11-1, to be received. Councilor Malkinson, seconded by Councilor Kenny. All those in favor? Opposed, it's carried. Strategic priorities chart, Jim? Anything to update?
Nothing new on the chart, your worship.
Thank you. And Tyra, anybody signed up for the question-answer period?
Not today.
Thank you. Just had to get your name on the, in the meeting there. No committee of the whole, so I look to media question period. And Matthew, you're it, buddy.
No, nothing, I'm with you.
Good. So on that, then, we'll look to council. We have a motion to recess to the close, but we're going to need to amend that, just to add Mr. Fred Burton for a delegation or question period under the closed. So, council, Councilor McFadden, seconded by Councilor Wilber. All those in favor?
Four.
Opposed, and it's carried. Thank you, everyone. So we will move into the closed here in about five minutes. I always say five minutes.